Seven fifteen. Can we please rise? Are we on the recording table?
We're recording right now.
Okay.
We're all set.
Seven fifteen, please rise for the CPC meeting. Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, bro. Okay, the first thing, we have to open up a public hearing. It's part of the law that defines all these programs. So we're opening up a public hearing for the public, and I'm gonna read a statement about, a little bit about the CPC. And then if anybody has any questions or comments, it shouldn't be that, it shouldn't be that long and then we'll switch, then we'll go to the regular meeting. Okay, basically, this goes out to the citizens of the town of Dayton. The Community Preservation Act, and forgive me, I have to read this offer here and, am I all right over there?
I'm good.
Okay. The Community Preservation Act allows any senior town in the Commonwealth to adopt a property tax surcharge for the purpose of expanding revenues from the surcharge in state matching funds on the acquisition of open space, historic preservation, community housing, land for recreation use. The citizens of Dayton placed the act, CPA, on the annual town ballot back in June first, two thousand nine. And it was passed in, basically at the annual election in April one, twenty ten. The surcharge of one percent was added to the property tax bill on one January twenty eleven. The first ten, hundred thousand of residential property values from, added to the property tax bill on January first, twenty eleven. The first hundred thousand of residential property values is exempt from the surcharge. Also exempt from the surcharge are qualified low-income households and qualified low or moderate income seniors. The Community Preservation Committee is made up of nine members. Four of these members are at large seats and they're appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The remaining five are representatives of the following committees: Planning Board, Historic Commission, Conservation Commission, Playground Commission, and Housing Authority. In two thousand thirteen, the Massachusetts State Legislature amended the Playground Commission and Housing Authority. Amended the Playground Commission, Housing. In two thousand thirteen, Massachusetts State Legislature, Legislature amended the law again. Among the changes was broadening, broadening, excuse me, the allowable recreation project. So they have started to allow recreation projects. It is now possible to use CPA money for the replacement of recreational equipment or other capital improvements. Previously, the CPA money could only be used for new recreation projects. Yeah, the amended law also created a new revenue source for funding the state's trust. Back in FY twenty nineteen, the town raised. This is just from twenty nineteen, this figure was ninety-six thousand seven fifty-nine. This was through the property tax surcharge. The state distribution was eighteen thousand three ninety-nine. The state match was nineteen percent. So basically, that's just some history of the CPC. I just talked to the, our financial guy. Nothing's really changed, so we don't really have a financial report tonight because nothing's really changed. And he is still trying to log on to Zoom. But we will get those numbers for you at the next meeting. And are there any questions from, is there anyone on Zoom that has questions from the public? And is there anybody that has orders? First of all, anyone on Zoom that has questions on the public hearing from CPC? Let's see in and hear and none. Anyone in the attending in person have questions during the public hearing for CPC? Mr. Chico?
So it sounds like it's about a hundred thousand dollars is added into the CPC funds from taxpayers, not including any state matches a year, roughly?
I think we just recently had an update that, even with COVID, they had a really good year of updating the funds. So I don't know the exact figure, but that could be used maybe as an estimate.
Okay.
But we kind of break it down to, it's like a ten, ten, and ten formula, which we could get more specific because we have to look at what people have to present. Then we have to look to see where it fits in. And then we have to see what funds. The last, we didn't have a quorum at the last meeting, but we did look at the, what we had from the accountant. Because we've had some new accountants switching in and out. So now they're getting up to speed with all their numbers. So I will have the, at the next meeting, I should have the complete, all the complete numbers. And Mr. Erickson is our vice chair, and he also does the, all the books. He just reports and all the stuff. Did you wanna, all right, I can repeat them, but I mean, we're just in the public hearing.
Yeah, so it is, uh, United line on the front balances, the whole pool balances at seven ninety-three, five oh two as of June thirtieth. However, I think that is including, why it has already been set aside for the, for the Lincoln Village project.
Yeah, correct.
Action for is more on an order of six hundred sixty thousand plus or less.
Okay, any questions on that? That's what, that's what he's got right now, so. Okay.
Can I ask one additional question?
Yeah.
So do you guys have a certain, you can call me Kevin, that's fine. Do you guys have a certain amount of time that you can hold on to the funds before they expire? Or is it just, or can the account keep building?
I believe it, if I'm not mistaken, that I believe it just, it does build, yeah. It just stays in the, stays in there. If I'm not, Mr. Erickson, am I correct on that?
No, no, just a few.
Yeah, there's a few delays, and then you have stuff floating around. Is kind of a way to put it, but we have some things that we have commitments that are out there. The, like, the housing thing was approved, but that's been delayed because of COVID. But that's gonna be completed, so that's something that's gonna be done.
That started in two thousand eighteen, Housing Authority, and they had to put these panels in, but they run into a problem with the transformers because there's more electrical work that they thought they were gonna have to get into. And they couldn't shut the power down with winter coming and things like that. So it's gonna put a bit more, but this is what we've got. We appreciate that. But the reason it's being held up is, is because of the, trying to get the work done. You know, going to the different committees and things like that.
But, you know, the money is earmarked for that.
Yeah, it's in the, yeah.
I mean, it's in the.
Yep, there's still promise to it. We just can't move on those panels until these, I think it's two transformers that are dangerous. And they have, and there's a lot of underlying work and things like that.
So that's an example of what can happen when you approve monies and something happens and holds it up, but it's still in the, it's in the kitty per se, but it's earmarked. It's blocked off in the, when the accountant comes down with her. And it's all public record. You know, we don't handle any cash. Everything goes through the state, the accounting. There's always a sheet, and they're still putting stuff together for other departments that they haven't firmed up yet. Okay, any other questions on the public hearing part? Anybody else come on Zoom that we didn't recognize?
Uh, I think we got everybody on right now, and.
All right, so if I'd seen and hearing none on the, any more questions? That's basically what it's about. We're trying to help people. It's the people's money. If it fits the parameters of this, and this group will review it. And you know, there's a process, application process, and then, you know, we bring it forth and we take a look at it. And then it ultimately has to go to town meeting and then gets approved by the town folks. And it, it's, in a sense, we call it the people's money, but it's, if we can help anybody in the parameters of this, then we're more than happy to take a look at it and see how it flows and then go from there. Some people have been in the process before, some people are new to the process. But it's a process. You know, it's not that bad. We try to make it as painless as possible and as quick as possible. You know, we try to get through it and answer any questions and try to explain it. And like I say, I haven't met anyone in this town that doesn't learn something new every day the way things are going nowadays. So you learn kind of by the seat of your pants, that's, which is amazing, but. So if there's nothing else going on, I'm gonna close the public hearing. At seven twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thanks, Woody. Will I hear a second?
That's it.
Hearing the motion made by Mr. Woods to close the public hearing.
Roll call vote, Tom. Roll call vote.
Oh, yeah, okay. Mr. Woods?
Hi.
Who else we get on there? That's it?
Uh, we got the two right now. We got someone on the telephone.
Oh, Mr. Erickson. Aye on the closing of public hearing? Aye, okay. Uh, Mr. Pruitt? Mr. Pruitt? To vote on the closing of public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, Dave.
Aye.
Dave. And I'll step back and I vote aye. So it's unanimous in those in attendance. So the public hearing is closed at seven twenty-six. Okay, now we're gonna open up the other thing. All right, let's switch over to the regular CPC meeting. We don't have to pledge again, though.
No, we're, we're all set, right? Just one thing, Jim, and so we got Woody on Zoom. The other person on the telephone, can you say who you are, please?
Oh, can, Dave, can you say who you are?
Hello?
Hi.
Oh, that's Karen, okay.
Hello?
All right, Dave, we got Karen.
Okay. Karen, can you hear us?
All right, sorry.
Hello?
Hi.
Any, yeah, this is Karen. Can anybody hear me? I can hear you.
Karen, I can hear you, just a word.
Karen, if you can hear us, that's great. If we just, uh. We have the public hearing. You can hear us, okay, right? So we're gonna continue with the meeting, okay? I forgot to read that statement. Okay, just to backtrack a little on opening the meeting. Let's open the regular CPC meeting with a statement. Due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, this meeting will be hybrid meet, be a hybrid meeting. This meeting is being held in person and via Zoom. And the meeting ID was eight-two-three-nine-five-four-four-six-five-eight-six, and the passcode was seven-six-zero-one-two-zero. And there's a phone number, I don't think you need that. And, oh, do you need that to dial in? One-nine-two-nine-two-oh-five-six-seven-nine-nine, as well as, it's also, we're not broadcasting live, right? No, it's coded. So this is going in the cloud, this goes into the cloud, be on YouTube later, as soon as they upload it. Okay, so we took care of that. That should have been read before the public hearing, but my apologies, but with all this technical. So let's open the regular meeting with a roll call of attendants at seven twenty-eight, maybe? Seven twenty-eight, looks like, on that clock. The regular meeting. And a roll call, a roll, a roll call. Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Yeah.
Mr. Marvell?
Here.
Adele?
Yeah.
David?
Rosa?
Here.
And myself, Tom Bertram. Chairman Karen is on the line, our clerk. Still got us?
Yep.
Oh, and Mr. Erickson on the speaker, sorry. But he is, at least he can hear and he can speak with us. All right, let's, let's do it this way. First of all, let's take a look at, we're gonna follow up with Patricia Gales from Historical, and then we'll go from there with our people we got in, in, in attendance. Mrs. Gales, did you wanna do your little presentation for us?
Do you wanna know where we are in our?
Yeah, you said you were gonna update us on where you're at. We really, you know, we're happy you came because it helps explain what we're doing with, what you're doing.
We're working on the Dayton Community-wide Historic Property Survey Update. And we have hired a preservation consultant, Stacy Spies, to, to work with us. Phase one of the project was completed in October twenty-ninth, and I handed Tom the invoice, hard copy of the invoice tonight for the first phase, which is for three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The Historical Commission reviewed the report from phase one and the invoice and voted to approve to send it to the CPC for payment. The phase one report basically sets the methodology for the survey update and is defining the criteria that will, will be used to select the properties that will be inventoried. We're working on finalizing this criteria. I met on Tuesday with the Massachusetts Historical Commission and Stacy, the preservation consultant, took over some of the details on the phase one report. And she had put in like seventy-five years, the commission has said a hundred years of age for the homes. There was a rationale as to why she said seventy-five, so we'll go back to the Historical Commission. So we'll have that finalized in, in December. In phase two, which we're in now, it will continue the architectural assessments and the documentary research, and a final list of the properties will be developed. And then sample inventory forms documenting the properties will be produced for a review. And this would be the format that would be used for all of the properties that are going to be surveyed. And the Dayton Historical Commission and the Massachusetts Historical Commission will review all of that. Phase two ends on December seventeenth, and at that time, we'll also receive the second invoice for four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I'll be bringing that.
What was that?
Four thousand three hundred and seventy-five. So once we receive that, we will bring it back to you again. So that's where we're at with that project.
All right, very good. Do we have to vote on this first phase to pay the bill?
I'd say yes.
I'd agree, yes. So I'd like someone to make a motion to pay this bill for the historical, for phase one, on the property survey project. It's three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Make a motion that we pay the first phase of three hundred, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion made?
I've said it.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Marvell, seconded by Adele, college. Karen, are you got us, you all good on the audio? I'm taking notes, you're taking notes, right?
Yeah, I'm taking, but I'm, we're gonna down, because it's recorded too, to, that helps.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Hold on, does that?
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
We are, we are sure this is approved by town meeting, right?
The project was approved at town.
Oh, yeah, it was. Mr. Erickson, yes?
Yes, okay, yeah. They haven't added the town media articles to the financial report yet.
Okay, it was, it was, yes, thank you. That's why, that's why he's doing the financial.
Hello?
Thanks, David.
Karen, listen.
Hello?
And Karen, can you hear us?
Hello, this is Karen. I'm trying to understand what just went on.
Taking notes as best we can.
I, I am taking. Hello, this is Karen. I've been listening, I am taking notes.
Okay, we're, we're taking some notes.
What did you just vote on?
And we.
What did you just vote on? Wasn't that already passed?
Yeah, it was passed at a town meeting, but we have the invoice.
Oh, you're voting on. Passing the, the invoice, okay.
Yeah, we're voting on the invoice from the first phase.
Okay.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any other? Dave, any proposition? Do I have to do a roll call on that one, too?
Probably should.
All right, let's do a roll call on it. David, Marvell?
Yes.
Woody? Mr. Woods?
Hi.
Roll call vote. Woody's aye. Woody, aye, Mr. Pruitt? Dave?
Aye.
Rosa, I mean, David Erickson?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt, you said aye.
Yeah, okay.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So unanimous. Motion carried.
This is me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm texting with Mr. Reins, and he has tried four times to get in, and he's having difficulty, and he says all he hears is music. So I'm.
I'm playing any music.
Yeah, I know, but, you know, four times he's tried.
I think there was, something popped up a while back about two people in the waiting room. I don't know if you're seeing it on the.
Oh, you know, one of them. I got three in here right now, let me just check. We're checking the waiting room, Woody, there might be somebody in here. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna tell them to try one more time.
That's all we have, is going off to somebody else, which we really don't want right now, okay? Um, he's got the option, can he try calling in on the phone? I was tapped.
I don't know, he's just trying to, you know, zoom in with the passcode and leading ID. I sent him the proper one.
Okay, it's not much we can do here, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, let's move on.
Okay, okay. And did you have anything else for us? You're good, right?
I'm at, yeah, I have my application for the next round, but if someone else wants to go, that's fine, too.
All right. If you don't mind, I'd like to go to the recreation.
That's fine.
Okay, so we have Art and Recreation Chair, Chairman.
We're getting zoomed in.
And he's gonna present, I'm gonna pass what I have that he put in for the applications, for his application. Thanks, sir. So you guys. And then whatever you got there. Woody, I'm gonna have to try to scan it and send it to you. Give you notice.
Yeah, anything, Tommy, you could just give me a copy, one of the.
Okay, I'll get your copy.
Thanks, sir.
I did, I did get a scanner from my phone and I can send it, scan it and send it.
Yeah.
I get, I get your.
Run the ball.
I'll get your hard copy. All right, so take a little bit.
Mr. Reins says it's already in progress. That's all I can say, I'm not relaying no more messages.
What did he say?
He says, it says already in progress.
Okay.
Whatever that means.
Yeah. And Mr. Erickson, I'm gonna have to scan a copy of that Park and Rec stuff to you and send it to you that way, unless I can get a hard copy to you. Basically, what we do is.
What?
I'm trying to put them on YouTube over there. That didn't work, okay. What we do is we take in whatever you have to say, do your presentation, then you'll come back and we'll, you know, we have to take the time to view everything.
Absolutely.
Till the next meeting, so if you, you have the floor, if you wanna go there.
Okay, so what we're, the Dayton Parks and Rec Commission is applying for is funding for the North Dayton Playground, which has been absent from the community for going on sixteen years. Uh, we're starting off with a blank slate at that property, so we'll be installing new playground equipment, which is depicted in the three D drawings that you have in front of you. Along with that, there'll be new playground servicing. We chose to do a combination of the port rubber servicing, which makes it fully ADA compliant, and then we mixed in some of the engineered wood fiber to help keep the cost, the overall cost down because the port rubber is extremely expensive. It's upwards of like twenty-six thousand square foot. So we cut that back and then we can use some rubber mats over the mulch to increase accessibility to some of the other play features as needed. You also see in your, I do have a pricing breakdown from the contractor who we've been working with, which is O'Brien and Sons. They would be the provider of the equipment and the installer. But the play equipment itself is from a company called Placy, who does an extremely good job of making playground equipment fully accessible. If you'll, you'll notice in the, in the three D rendering, there's what looks like a merry-go-round, a merry-go-round, but that's not your typical, you know, classic merry-go-round. It's a fully accessible merry-go-round that's accessed from the ground level. You don't have to climb onto it, a wheelchair, a child in a walker, or a typical child could walk right into it. And it can be operated independently also, so it works a lot like the old teacup rides where there's a wheel in the middle. And so instead of having a parent have to swing it, the kids can be inside it and turn it themselves. So it promotes independent play. Um, that was a huge part of it. Yeah, the little round thing there, so that.
Okay.
It's kind of like a new wave merry-go-round that, that can be used by just about anyone. And then we also do this swing sets depicted in there, which was a big ask of the community. The original drawing that we got didn't have swing sets and everybody was unhappy, so we added them in. And we'll also make sure that, it's not depicted in the picture, but we'll also make sure that we have an ADA-style swing seat installed, much like we have at the community playground right near us at, at Town Hall. Um, and we'll also have play fe, uh, ground play features, plus we have, you know, your typical slides and climbing features, which was a lot of what, when I reached out to members of the community and parents and children, you know, ages five to twelve, that's what they wanted, a lot of climbing features. So we tried to get the best of both worlds and have, you know, features for kids that wanna climb and do slides and have swings, and then also have, you know, a fair amount of accessible features also for kids who can't access those types of equipment. I do, I did provide you also with a little bit of a pricing breakdown of the way that we were trying to do it. So the overall total project, when presented by the contractor, was a hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, we do have some additional costs, such as fencing in the playground and also creating walk, concrete walkways to and from the parking area to the playground. So our total project cost was gonna be in the neighborhood of two hundred and ten thousand four hundred and eighty-one. We do have some in-kind work that will be done on this project. So the fourteen thousand dollars of excavation will actually be done by the highway department. The installation of the timber tough edging and the installation of the wood fiber servicing would both be done by a volunteer effort of Parks and Rec commissioners and members of the community. Um, I spoke with a gentleman from O'Brien and Sons to try to find items that we could kind of do ourselves. Um, and those were two things they said, like typically a community would get together because the timber tough edging is just like an interlocking rubber block that binds everything in and holds the mulch material in. And then the mulch material itself is just, you know, spread with wheelbarrows and, and there's nothing really special there. They would be providing the installation of the actual equipment and the port rubber, which is one of the critical portions of the, of the installation.
Is that a binary, some kind of binary thing that exists?
Yeah, it's, it's like a two, it's a, it's a rubber, ham, ham.
But it's much better for wheelchair and.
That surface there is completely accessible to any, any type of, you know, whether, you know, mobility aid or, and also the thing with that too is it also provides fall protection. So we always come back to, oh, well, we want it to be accessible, but it also, you know, provides an additional level of fall protection from the, the structure itself. And so both of those items, both the port rubber and the wood fiber will be, are engineered by the designer to be a certain depth to provide fall protection. Um, and even the wood fiber itself is, you know, quote unquote ADA accessible, but we've also discovered through Parks and Rec and the Commission on Disability is the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board developed what they call a grass mat, which is really like a thick version of a restaurant-style mat that you'd see like in the kitchen. It's an interlocking rubber mat that you can put over the wood fiber and now that becomes completely wheelchair or, you know, mobility aid accessible to. So we do have the flexibility to expand into the mulch areas, like say for the ADA swing, it would be, you know, we would use the rubber mats, which are about a third of the cost of port rubber to get to that area.
How long do these rubber mats go for? I mean with, you know, um,
Years, something years or things like that because of the, you know, winters and.
So they are, they're, they're supposed to be, we need, uh, we've done some research on them. They're made of a compound that is UV and weather resistant. There is a five to seven, depending on which company you use, a five to seven year warranty, full replacement warranty on the item. And it is relatively new, but they're projecting that the match should be viable for, you know, fifteen plus years. So.
When, uh, this is in the North Dyne area where I'm looking at this, where have they played this stuff? We have, they have the ball field. They will keep the ball field.
So the ball field will stay. We've had some back and forth on location. The original location was outback. We've had public input that feel like they would like to see it outback again. Um, and when we had public input where they'd like to see it upfront. So there's a, the front right corner of the property is completely open space right now. Um, it's all grass. The other, we just had a Parks and Rec meeting this past Monday. We, the commission, after discussing, voted unanimously that we would like to propose that it be built upfront for a number of reasons. One of them being public safety because it's at the forefront of the property where it can be. And I've had conversations with both the police chief and members of IEMTs in town. Um, so for safety reasons, it's much more accessible for them if it's upfront. For vandalism reasons, same thing, it's upfront. People can give an eye on it.
Well, it's about back is.
And one of the other reasons why we personally, that came up in discussions, why we like it upfront is because that particular ball field gets used heavily by families who have Little League practices. And what I've noticed there is most of those families have kids participating in Little League, but they also have their little kids with them on the bleachers. Now this, safety has come up. That's why we've incorporated, it's not depicted in the drawing, but we've incorporated fencing into our overall cost and a guard rail along the street side. The, the park itself won't be right up against the street, but we will provide a guard rail much like we have at the police station to create, you know, an effective barrier from the street. Um, but we like the idea of parents that were, you know, participating with children in the Little League being able to take their kids and have them, you know, they're just off to your right. We completely fenced an area with closing gates. So you have a safe place for those kids to be able to play. And even so, just people passing by in the neighborhood, it's a heavily walked neighborhood, a lot of small children. It's gonna get utilized more by families who walk by, see it right here as opposed to be way out back, um, behind the ball field.
Handicap person, that's major to have it that close because back, you know, taking a wheelchair, taking a walker, whatever for these, that's.
Well, we've, we've had that conversation too. And I mean, we do have the capability, but it would take some relocation and, and encroaching on the baseball field to create an accessible pathway. We'd have to move a couple of telephone poles. So we'd create an even larger project to be able to establish, uh, you know, a, a minimum of free for black concrete path all the way back there. I myself am a parent of a child who is a full-time wheelchair user. I know for myself, if I drove by that park, I would not park my car there and then walk all the way out back to use the playground.
I've heard of students in wheelchairs. This is why, you know, a composite of that as you are, that people don't realize that that distance with you in a wheelchair, like you and I both know, up here to there is, okay, we can go. But there were times that's too far.
Well, and even more so, it's, and it's not even, I, I think more because of our involvement with, um, the disabled community, especially with small children. And the wheelchair users are really the, the, the least worried because typically they're wheeling pretty easily or they're being pushed. It's the other children, you know, who might even just have, you know, some sort of, uh, ankle and knee braces that it's more difficult to walk. Like I would, it would be worse to have a child who walks with an aid have to transport themselves back there than it would be, you know, but even with a wheelchair. So I think overall, um, for the scope of the project, it's just an overall better location in our opinion, along with some input from.
I, I like, uh, my opinion, I love, I like to, you know, the front for so many reasons like that, you know.
Mm-hmm. So also too, just so you guys kind of know the overall idea too, because we did have conversations about safety with the ball field. Um, we do, I, we've been start, we started the process, we actually voted to start the work in our last meeting also. There was past CPC money, which was approved to redo the baseball field fence. So we already have a contractor lined up and we're ready to go. Mr. Ferri and the Highway Department have demolished the old backstop and dug out fences. That's gonna be all new. So we're really gonna try to dress up like the entire front of that property. And ex- expand that, um, backstop again before the reason of foul walls.
This is desperately needed. This is desperately needed.
Okay, long overdue.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's definitely long overdue is, uh, as far as playgrounds are concerned, it's an underserved portion of the town that has a high population of small children. Um, so we're obviously itching to get, you know.
This area, this variety, you know, and my children, and I will use that. But right now, what I'm seeing is there, the families that are moving in now, my age group, we're selling off, or you, you're the neighbor too. Um, young families are coming in and they don't have that place to go. And I personally think this is so desperate. Families to be someplace.
Right.
If he was a dad, could have another dad, hey, how you doing?
Yeah.
And enjoy this camaraderie with these children.
Right.
We need this so desperately.
We are in agreement.
I like it.
Mr. Pruitt, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I'm in the meeting. I had a little problem getting in. I was in and it locked me out. I couldn't get back in, but I'm back and in the meeting.
Thank you, Tim. Sorry about that. Oh, my God.
Oh, it happens, you know, just technology. So, um, but can I ask a question? How many members are present this evening who serve on the committee?
We've got five in person. At the, at the prime time. Five physically at prime time and then.
Okay, that's the only question I asked. How many members are present?
Okay. Thank, is that alright then? You answered your question? Oh, go ahead, Mr.
I was gonna ask, I was.
I know. Yeah.
Um, before my time here, uh, there had been already a submission of a similar project. I'm sure a lot of people know about it. I don't, don't want to go into it to anybody. And I went to the, um, the Massachusetts CP Commission website and I looked at all the projects that Dyne has done since the inception of the CPC here in town. And it's not that many actually, about one, one a year by looks of it. But anyway, that project that's similar to this one was, according to the website, approved. Now, I don't know what approved, I don't know what that meant was approved by the CPC and was passed us on the warrant at a meeting. Do you know what?
So it was approved, conditionally approved by the CPC, but that approval was only for the surfacing. It was, I remember, I think it was seventy-two thousand.
No, that's incorrect. The CPC never approved the surfacing or any of that. To go for, uh, we went to town meeting, the vote was nuts. Um, it was voted on, it was voted down. Um, there was no money set aside in the kitty specifically for that, that CMIC built to this day. The only thing they're doing right now is the, is the fencing and the lighting for the project and that's it.
So it, so it never made it, it didn't pass the, the, correct, at the town meeting with table that?
It, it did not pass a town meeting, Mr. Pruitt. We presented the project at town meeting. The residents didn't want to go forward with it. It was voted down at town meeting that year. But any project that you see on the CP, on the CPC website or the Department of Revenue website that is already categorized, those are projects that have been approved, monies have been spent and that's been reported to the Department of Revenue. I've done that in the past.
Alright.
So that's what you'll see on either the CPC website in regards to projects being done in Dyne, which is like the Winslow Davis House, for example. Or the tennis courts, um, so forth.
Right, so those just, those just mean that they success, successfully were passed by the CPC and not necessarily passed by the town?
No, no. It's the, the CPC receives the application. We vote on it to extend those funds as a recommendation to the body of town meeting. Any in our projects that are voted on and approved and spent goes to the town meeting process.
Okay, I'm con- I'm confused, Mr. Reins then. Uh, I thought someone had said that, um, that, that this, uh, well, it didn't pass the town meeting, right?
Right.
So are you saying that the CPC data on the main website, the state website?
There should be no projects listed for the North Dyne Playground and the CPC project, other than the fencing and the lighting that was approved at, at prior town meeting, I believe, four years ago.
So.
The only thing.
Alright, I'm, I'm confused again here. So, here's a project that was passed.
Alright, so let me explain the process, Mr. Pruitt. What happens is that the, an applicant comes in with an application. They have ten applications they present to us for an application for eligibility. We receive the application for eligibility. We take it under advisement for a month so we can review the application and come back maybe a month, two months later and decide that yes, we're gonna be, give them an application for funding. Then the applicant receives the application for funding through the CPC, which is us, the body of nine people. They come back to us with any pertinent information that we need, whether it be three bid quotes from, uh, contractors, um, that type of thing. And then they would come back to us, we would render the decision that we want to go forward to spend, expand X amount of monies, like the, the, um, Housing Authority Project in North Dyne, which has already been voted on at town meeting. But the money is, is sitting in the fund because the state is still waiting to go out the bid again for the project, but those monies that we.
Excuse me, Mr. Reins, that.
Yes.
I know that, that's a very good, I'd like to listen more to that, but, uh, all I'm really asking is whether or not or whether or not it would show up on the CPC website as passed. All I'm asking is whether that means whether it's been.
No, it wouldn't.
Okay, so it, if it was denied by the town, it would still show up as passed on the CPC website, is that right?
I don't believe so.
Well, it's on the website, but you, somebody just said that it wasn't, didn't pass the town meeting, isn't that right?
Are you talking about the complete project for the North Dyne Playground, Mr. Pruitt?
I'm talking about a previous application to the CPC, which is similar to the one that we're seeing tonight. Right? Am I remembering correctly from that?
You're, you're not, that's, that's incorrect, right? I, I've, I've been the one who's done the whole process this whole time and I've just explained the process to you. So again, CPC receives the application for eligibility. We look at it, we take it under advisement. Then we have received the application for funding if.
Alright, I don't wanna, no, maybe you hear the whole story.
We as the body vote.
A simple question, but I, is, there's a.
Yeah, the only explanation I can give is you, I'm trying to give you to understand the whole process and that's how it works.
Well, I don't, I'm not asking for that, Mr. Reins.
There should be no.
I don't want, it's, it's too much to, to ask right now for, and we could, it's gonna take too much time to do that.
No, I don't understand why. I'm trying to explain the process and how it transpires.
The question is, if I see the CPC.
Alright, um.
Go to the coalition, if you go to the CPC Coalition website, yes. On that, you should be listed on the web.
I think what it is, Mr. Pruitt, I'm gonna insist that somebody, some gets an answer for you.
I just gave you, I'm giving you the answer, sir. Hold on, will you, I'm, hold on just for a second, please. If you go to the CPC Coalition website and all projects listed on the website for the title of Dyne, yes, have been approved at town meeting by the residents, which had been the recommendation of the body of the people, presented to the people by the CPC. That's how the process works. So anything you see listed, yes. The only thing you see, should you see listed on that, it should be other projects that we've done in the past, which is the tennis courts, the Winslow Davis House on William Street, um. What do you think now? The fencing and the lighting for North Dyne Playground, yes, that is, that is listed on there because those monies are sitting right now in the fund because they have not been expended because none of the work has been completed. Now again, if.
Uh, Mr. Reins?
Was that Mr. Woods?
Uh, it's Dave Rosa. Uh, I think, uh, what Mr. Pruitt might have in mind, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, that he may be, uh, a little bit confused, understandably so, on, uh, what is a, a period is approved versus the total playground project that you worked diligently on. And I believe the, uh.
It passed our meeting, sir.
Yeah, you have the floor, Mr. Reins?
Never, never passed at town meeting. The residents voted down the project that was presented through the Playground Commission, through the CPC, which the CPC vote, body voted on. They defeated that whole project.
Okay.
Okay, which was, we had the opportunity to receive not only state grant monies, but we also receiving a discount from the manufacturer.
Okay.
Mr. Reins, we, we've got that part. Thank you very much.
Tim, he's gonna withdraw his question.
And I, I think the, the part that he, uh, that Mr. Pruitt, I've seen on the records is the part that you mentioned earlier in your conversation, when it had to do with the, uh, the fencing and whatnot. So thank you very much for bringing us up to speed.
Thank you, Mr. Reins.
Sorry if it was long-winded, but that's the only explanation I can give, gentlemen.
We're fine. We're fine. We're gonna carry on. Okay, um. Any other?
Any other questions now?
So, Mr. Rosa, go ahead.
Sorry for, sorry.
No, that's fine.
So we have covered, um, uh, what is being, uh, the money that we're asking for. We have, uh, the chair has covered many of the details. So at this point, uh, uh, are there any other questions with regard to what we're presenting?
I'm sorry, I was busy getting everybody online, which I'm very happy right now, but can you give me the price again of the package?
So.
Playground, thank you.
So the total playground package, including equipment installation, um, we'll say, we'll talk, the total value of the project is two hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and nineteen cents. And then on our CPC application request, that amount was a hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents. So we took into, uh, um, account of a few different things. We have, I didn't wanna come up with an exact number. I didn't wanna ask for a, a number higher than that for a couple of different reasons. Because of, one, the in-kind contributions and two, um, we're not, because we depending on the positioning of the sidewalks and stuff, those numbers could change. So, um, and as, as in with the fencing as well, like they all, just the way that, because we don't know when we get to excavation, if we might need to shift it one way or another. So the dimensions of a few things might change. So there's a little bit of flexibility to, to move. I'm overestimating it, my total project cost, but that was my ask with the consideration for those two things. And also, and I think I, that we'll get to the point that outside of any possible CPC funding, we will have a small ask, um, in a warrant article from, you know, reason appropriate.
Right, so just to emphasize, correcting from wrong, sir. Other funding sources are in-kind via the highway department, Parks and Recreation Operating Budget and warrant articles and volunteer work. That's the, that's the plan. That's how to bridge the gap between what we're asking for, the hundred and sixty thousand versus our estimate of a total project cost of, uh, approaching two hundred and ten thousand. Are there any questions?
Is this, uh, quickly going to the same place as before in the back or?
Relatively in, to the front right corner, which I believe you were with us at that meeting.
I wanna make sure it hasn't changed.
Yeah.
All, all the work will be, uh, prior as you approach the field, prior to the, uh, baseball field.
Uh, somebody had a question for me for this meeting coming up. They wanna know, is it gonna be some type of, uh, security camera there? I don't know who's gonna be monitoring it, but.
So it has come up. I, I've had that question come up to me as well. And the way it was proposed to me was that if the playground was to be placed outback, that they would like to see security cameras for the reason of, you know, mostly vandalism. Um, if we're, I think it, it's less of a, of an issue if we're upfront where it's seen by traffic. Um, we, we also have the possibility because there is electric hookups right now that go to the ball field lighting. We wanted to do some sort of, you know, type of, um, post lantern or something of that nature to light it up. You know, obviously we don't wanna light it up all night into residential neighborhood, but.
You just said a key phrase, Mr. Smith, uh, traffic. And that's the reason why in the nineteen sixty era, even though there was less cars on the road, that that playground was placed outback because of traffic.
Well, I've had plenty of.
Honestly, I think it's a public safety issue. That's just my opinion. So I just, you know, because that's why again, that playground was never placed out front because of the kids. It's bad enough that you have baseball games going on down there where people parked on both sides of the road. Now you wanna put a playground out front? I think you're.
Change the fencing?
We're going to increase the parking area? We're going to put in a heavy-duty car grab?
Parking area or not, area or not, it's still a major public safety hazard.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan's.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Woods.
I would like to make a motion to take this playground project under advisement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, let's do a roll call.
Mr. Woods?
Wait, wait a minute, there's going to be some discussion.
Oh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, I do not agree with the, uh, I don't know what you mean by taking it under advisement. We're, we're, we're looking to submit our application this evening, uh, what, see, see.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
No matter if you submitted it this evening or not.
Excuse me, gentlemen, may intercede, may intercede. The process of the CPC committee is, and has always been that, application received is taken under advisement.
Yeah, we're just bringing it.
If the people there get an opportunity to view the application, the committee will come back. It could be a month or two months and decide that it goes further with an application for funding. It may be denied at the application for eligibility process, who knows? But that's how the process is done.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan's.
That's how it is. Any other committee in this?
Point of order, please. Only one person talking at a time. Every single project that has come before the CPC, and I have been involved from day one, has been taken under advisement. And everyone presenting a project, according to our website, is supposed to supply the chairman with ten copies. So, I don't know if you brought ten copies. If you did not, you need.
He has, he has. Okay. We have the ten.
So, every single project is taken under advisement.
Taken, sir, thank you.
Is no more special than any other project. So, I made a motion.
You can follow the guidelines, Mr. Woods, and we have the ten. Okay. Okay, so we're all cleared up on what that means?
Now, we can go back to the report.
Any other discussion?
You didn't get an application in my hand before this meeting started?
What ten?
I did not receive a physical application in my possession before this meeting started, or even a PDF for that matter, before this meeting started.
Or email box, thanks, Mr. Smith.
So.
The only thing I can do is scan it and get it to you.
It's not your responsibility, Tom.
Well, what I did the last time. Tom, we could talk about this because I haven't received anything either. So, even if you get one copy, or you can get it, I meet you, I can scan it, however we got to do it. Um, this is a hybrid world.
I did scan, uh, some historical commission paperwork. For the first time, I used the scanner, and everyone, I think, got it, as far as I know.
Uh, well, so, hold on, hold on, we're, we're.
We didn't have a forum last month.
Back to the, let's get back to the subject matter, gentlemen. We have.
Okay, so.
On the floor to take an application under advisement in a second.
Okay, and we're starting to vote? Is there any, let's move the vote. Okay.
All right, quite.
Do it by roll. Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
Erickson, I'm sorry. Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's?
Aye.
Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Rosa says aye. If aye means that the CPC is accept, is accepting it for under advisement.
That means they're accepting it, yeah. To review it.
For review, this evening.
No, probably.
And, uh, and copies to follow to other members that are telecommuting in on, I guess, is it Tuesday or tomorrow?
We're going to get scanned, scanned and get them out to people.
Tomorrow. So, in that case, I vote aye. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Rosa, you have no, are, are you, um, who are you representing?
Parks and Recreation.
Okay, I didn't, I had no idea. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Ryan's. So.
Uh, just a question, so we're all up with this playground, does it, you make a note? But what do we need to satisfy this committee?
I want to finish the vote. Can I finish the vote?
Sure.
I'm sorry, he's in the office, so go on. I didn't vote. I vote aye. So, it's, it's unanimous from to, to accept the, uh, under advisement. Take it under advisement is unanimous.
So, what do we need?
I have a question.
Right, what do we need from paperwork to satisfy the members to make sure we get all this paperwork in, so it's.
We have the, all the ten applications. I just have to scan them, the people that don't have them in their hands.
Okay.
Either have to scan them and get them to them, or I physically got to hand them.
Well, I, I have them on PDF on my computer, I can.
All right.
Point of order, please, again.
Mr. Woods?
It is the Park and Recreation's responsibility to supply us with ten copies of their application, and please have those put in our box at Town Hall.
Which they were. Which he did, I picked them up today.
One person at a time, I can't hear two people.
Mr. Woods, I picked up the ten applications today, and the people that are here physically have them.
I believe, uh, uh, gentlemen, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Go ahead, Mr. Ryan's.
Massachusetts, Massachusetts State Law, I believe, states that any extraneous materials submitted for a meeting must be submitted no later, no later than forty-eight hours prior to a meeting, and that's why you put an agenda out. But your agenda and the subject matter for your meeting may be changed up to the meeting time.
I do have, are you talking about the Park and Rec on the agenda?
I'm, I'm, yes, I'm talking about any extraneous materials submitted for a meeting must be submitted no later than forty-eight hours prior to a meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan's. I believe the chair of the Parks and Rec Commission stated that he put these documents in your mailbox, uh, at Town Hall, if I understood him correctly. Uh, that was Tuesday of this week. So, in a fashion, they were submitted, uh, well, well in time to meet that requirement. Tonight, just the, is the handing over the hard copies to the, to the, to the folks that are here, and a PDF copy can follow to you and others, uh, to satisfy the requirement.
But somebody should have notified they were in the mailbox at least.
Well, I was notified, Tim, that they were in there.
I ain't Rita.
I didn't know they were there.
Well, I, 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 I knew they were there, but my wife, I had, my wife's been in the hospital, and I just got home today, along with a key to this building in case Dave didn't show up right away. So, uh, I, I was, he sent me notification that they were in the mailbox, but I could only get them in my hand today. My wife just came home from the hospital today, and she had a serious operation, emergency, abdominal injury or something, I mean, you know. Most loss or so. I mean, I, I, it's just one of those things, I've, just, I've had a bad year for illnesses.
Doing a good job.
But anyhow, um, yeah, hopefully, we can straighten this out where we can get everybody the materials in, in their hands, and I think it would satisfy your thinking.
Could I ask one question? Now that the, the project goes under advisement.
Right.
Will the, will the discussion on the project?
Which one is under advisement?
Be discussed in an open meeting where I'll be able to provide more input if needed?
Yes.
This is a matter behind closed doors?
No, no, it goes into the.
Process, method of process continues.
It's a process.
You require the applicant, applicant to come back with us with any extraneous materials in regards to what they're doing for the project. And that's how it goes. It's still an ongoing process. And that's, you know, you go from, again, the application for eligibility. We review it, we think you would get together, we may get together the following month to meet and say, yeah, we approve it, or it may take two, three months.
Members will digest it, the members will digest it, we'll come back next month.
Well, that's just what I mean, is if it's on your agenda for discussion, I would like the invitation to be present.
Absolutely. Of course you would be, I'm back.
Okay, we need to move along.
Okay, so, to conclude. I think you guys are all set for now. We've accepted that material, and, uh, we're going to move on to the next thing. Thank you. Uh, we'll hold on to this, is, can we keep all this? Keep these.
Can I take one back?
You can take my call, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm right.
At least, at least.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Mr. Ryan's?
Yeah, I just want to ask a question of, uh, the, uh, cable man tonight, Mr. Marvell. Do we time out in this meeting, Dave, or is it unlimited?
I believe it's unlimited, so we can go longer if we can. And, uh, once again, I apologize, it was two separate IDs sent out tonight. I'm not sure why that happened, but at least everybody's on now.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, this unlimited thing, does this mean you can have a conversation till one o'clock in the morning? Well, we've got other people that have applica, uh, other applications they want to present. All right, so there'll be no more discussion about this? We're not talking, you guys are all set. And there'll be no more discussion? Not tonight? We're not keep bringing it up tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
You guys are good. Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Thank you. I'm sorry for the athlete's stock with everything going on, so.
We understand, thank you.
Appreciate your efforts. The next, I'd like, uh, the town clerk has a presentation, he has a, what's his first name?
All right.
Then we'll finish up with this historical.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to start by saying I have ten copies, Tom has PDF copies. So, I'm, I don't know what to say, I want that other than.
Well, we'll take the ten, the hard copies.
Uh, passing these out. All right, so now start off by saying, this project's different from what I presented last time. This, the last time was loose leaf, file records. So, what I'm here for tonight, this, this is about preserving books that are in the possession of the town clerk. The town clerk's office has sixteen books that are vital records that birthed deaths and marriages, ranging from the seventeen hundreds to approximately the nineteen fifties. So, if anyone's ever been to Town Hall, you can imagine the process. We take out the book, we open it, we find you, we retype out whatever the vital record is. Um, so, these books have been, um, restored in the past, and, um, it's time again for them to be restored. They, the pages are ripping, the binding is tearing, um. They're, they're the primary records, so it's, in some cases, it's going to be the only copy we have. In other cases, they, it may exist online in other places. So, the goal is to have them repaired, scanned, and copied. So, the best way to put it is, they were, they were preserved in the past, and they got degraded because they were used. They've been used every day. They get oils, they get light damage, they get chemical damage. So, we want to preserve them, and then we want to let them rest in the vault so that they're not banged up and we're not here again in another hundred years to, to fix them. So, I want to have copies made so that those are what we use on a day-to-day basis. So, it'd be a true, a true copy of the book. Um, so, if someone came to Town Hall and wanted to look at a birth, at the marriage, they can look at the fiscal book. They'd also be digitized with this company, and this will allow people to do research online in one central place. Um, and it's, it's good for people who can't come to Town Hall or may live out of state. So, that's, we have sixteen books, my application for eight of them. So, I'd like to do eight this year and eight next year. Also included, and I put it separate just to make it a little easier, is some proprietor's records. The proprietor's records, I would like to think is probably the most important book we have at Town Hall. This is a book that is essentially when we purchased land from the Native Americans. Um, so, this is from the sixteen hundreds, um, so it's four hundred years old. It's in very, very, very poor shape, and I don't think it's relatively known. Um, I don't, I would like to get more public outreach on it. Um, it'd be nice for people to know what's there, but it's in desperate need of restoration. It needs to be scanned and put online and accessible to people, and it needs to be put in a safe place in the vault so that no one, no one should touch it, ever. And it needs a true copy so that people can research it. So, if the total cost of the project is fifty thousand dollars, I have one contract in the application. It's NEDCC, they're on a handover, they're a nonprofit company. Um, they started out doing work for the state, and now they're doing municipalities, and they do all sorts of great preservation work. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Oh, go ahead, I'd like to go first if you don't mind. No, I don't mind, you, um, you mentioned, uh, the bidding. Is that all squared away with the?
So, I'm hoping I don't have to bid it out. I know it sounds squared away, I have to find out more, some more information. Um, they are really the only company that could do all three things on the East Coast.
Uh, I asked, or?
I need to get a second opinion.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, so, there's really no one else that can give me a bid, but.
I don't think it's a, I, I'm sure it could be taken under, as we say, advisement, and then maybe some further information, but I don't want to do anything.
That's a piece of my, if I want to, I need to find it. But I know I can get this application to you, and I will continue to find out if, if I have to find it out what to do. Because, again, there's, there's no company that can do other than this company that's on the East Coast.
Premier operation, however, Mr. Woods?
Uh, so, um, thank you for what you're doing, it's an admirable effort, so, you know, thank you very much. Um, now, the, in the first instance, you talk about, uh, essentially digitalized copies, and, and so we have a, an original in, in, uh, in, held in reserve, if you will, and then a working copy. So, if for whatever reason there's any question about what's reflected in the working, working copy, or there's some, uh, something happens to a page in the working copy, they can refer to the original. And there'll also be a digitalized version that will be at some point in time available online, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Now, uh, I, I'm seeing that slightly different from this one based on some of the words I thought I heard. Now, this one here is a second one, which I think is an eight thousand dollar script.
Yes.
And refers to a much older document, uh, reaching back, uh, back before the town was actually incorporated, correct?
Right, right, absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, and then your aim is to do the same thing there, digitalize and have a, uh, a repaired copy on the shelf of, available if there's a question about a working copy that may have been suffered spillage or something in this handling. It seems to me that, um, anytime, just a comment, just an observation, anytime that somebody reaches first one of these, I, I, I won't say sacrosanct, but I don't want to be negative, I want to say, one of these specially preserved copies, that they'd be wearing gloves to protect the pages from human, uh, perspiration, oils, whatever. And, and ladies pardon me, but in the preservation of documents, women's oils are far more, far more costly than this. So, if, sometimes, somehow or another, work that any of your process could be a comment, and you do as you see fit from there.
I appreciate it.
So, um, um, we're, we're, we're going back and preserving agreements that were made before we became an incorporated town. And I, I love the idea, but I hope it never comes back to haunt us.
There's a lot more to the proprietor's records than just buying the land, but that, that's the, that is the watered-down version.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
When you brought this plan as a, to the historic commission, um, have you changed anything?
The scope is exactly the same. When I brought it to the historical commission, I brought it to do all sixteen books. Looking at the price, I like to break it up into two years, I like eight and eight.
Let me just answer it in a different way, um, if I remember correctly, you had a, on those like fifteen or sixteen books, you had a request for funds to, um, preserve the books, in other words, rebuild them or preserve them, and, and also reproduce them, know, it's a whole new copy of the same books, as well as, what was the third one, with digitized? as well as, what was the third one, with digitized? I think, I thought that, I thought that we had, I had mentioned that you might want to eliminate the reproduction, because that was like forty-two grand, so.
You absolutely did, and I thought about it, that's why I mentioned historical society. If you do that, and you use those, if you restore the books and you continue to use those restored books as a day-to-day record, it's, we're gonna be in the same place again in fifty years.
So, you decided to go ahead with the reproduction part? The working copies, I don't have a problem with that, it's just the price, the price doesn't match. I thought it was like, with all three options, it was like eighty or ninety K.
We'd be, and then with the proprietor's records, you'd be around the hundred thousand, so that's why I have a break in the project.
But you're not requesting anywhere near that?
Fifty, so if you add the forty-two and the eight, that's, that's fair.
Or you would have the other part somewhere else in this document?
Well, there's two.
Yeah, there's two documents, so one is the proprietor's records, because it really is a different, it really stands out.
No, I understand, I understand what that is, but.
I'm sorry, you're doing this in phases, aren't you?
So, this, this would be phase one of the eight, this, the eight books plus the proprietor's.
Okay, so then it would be another roughly forty-something on the next phase.
I would come back to you guys, we'll see how this goes, I'd come back to you and ask for the other eight, and that, that should wrap up the vital records. Proprietors stand still on its own.
I think it's a great idea, I'm just wondering, when this goes online, will we be able to query like Adobe, like, you know, you used to find, like, we're looking at a particular person, you might find in those documents, once they go into like.
I don't think so.
Say it, no, okay, I'm just wondering.
There's an example in the proprietor's records of what a town did with their proprietor's records. It's Westport, so local, and.
Which page you're on, sir?
So, it's on the, it's the third page in.
I'm sorry.
On the proprietor's record.
Are you saying there's no search feature?
So, you gotta think these, these are hand-written, and they're in basically calligraphy. You can't, you can't search it. But you can, you can figure out, I mean, you know what the book is, so it's, let's say it's seventeen hundred to seventeen fifty, right?
Alright, so we can.
You probably know the year, so you can find the year. Now, you're only looking at how many people born that year, fifty, born by death, so you can, you can.
I know, thank you for, thank you for that one.
Yeah, so basically, you can, it'll be indexed, so if you see here, what Westport did with theirs is, they have each page has a title. You click on that page, and it's basically, it's a PDF copy, you can zoom in, you can really read it nice.
Oh, okay.
This is really.
That'd be awesome.
That would be really nice.
I, I have, I'm sorry, I'm, I apologize, good to interrupt. I have heard of software that can read handwriting and translate that, but into the more typed version, but maybe that's not available to us yet.
I, I think with a project like this, the sky's the limit with what you can do. I could, I could get different hosting softwares, you can, you can do so much with this. I think this is a conservative for our town. This would be almost given to you on a silver platter compared to what you have to do now. You have to come in person, you have to call, you have to wait weeks for me to mail it to you if you're on a state. This will really make it accessible. World's apart from anything we have now. It also thinks about natural disasters, right? Now, it's being stored on a server instead of just in our vault, just in town hall. We, we have so much history in this town, and I'm just looking to do it. I even hate asking for this kind of money. I, I hate, I can't believe, you know, nine books is this much, but if you think about the history of the town and all the founding fathers were all in this, it's, the goal is it's one and done, I'm trying to think ahead. I don't want to come to you again, and I don't want, it should never come to you guys again, this project.
You know, the public can see this once it goes online, anybody has rights to this, to look at it.
Absolutely, maybe not the last book in the nineteen fifties, right? After a hundred years, evidence, public record, so, you know, some people's records are impounded, so maybe the last book wouldn't be online, but nine, say, eighty percent of the stuff is gonna be public record, it can go online.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do.
Mr. Ryan.
Did I hear correctly, it was fifty thousand dollars for eight books?
Yeah, nine books, yes.
Nine books, so, and that's, and that would be half, so if you were to, so hypothetically, if you were to come back to us next year, there could be a cost incursion, and so my question is that if you were to preserve all of our town books at one time, would the vendor come in at, say, be willing to come in to say eighty-eight to ninety thousand dollars to preserve all these? Since he's gonna be doing them all at one time, or, that's just a question?
I have, I've talked to them coming down on the price. They're nonprofit, they give, they really do give the best price. They're, they're.
Mr. Chairman? I, I, yes, sir, Mr. Woods.
Robert Woods here.
Mr. Woods.
I would really like to commend Mr. Pacheco for becoming the new town clerk, and he's really hit the ground running.
Absolutely.
This project has been discussed for at least ten years. And I don't want to throw the prior town clerk under the bus, but it was mentioned to Mr. Pacheco early on, and he jumped right on it, and he's doing a fantastic job, not just on this, but anything that I've seen him do so far, and he's to be commended.
That's what I understand.
And, and I would like, this is just my opinion, my opinion, I don't want to see him cut corners on this. I talked to him before about getting in touch with the town of Easton, who's done this maybe eight or ten years ago, and they did a good job, and technology has improved since then. We have the money, this is a very important project. You know, we had a fire before in the school and a lot of records were lost. We could have a fire in the new town hall and lose records. To me, personally, this is a huge project, and I would not want to see anyone, you know, and I've seen so many projects in town where they're concerned about saving money and doing it the cheapest they can. But to me, this is very important, and I give it one hundred percent support. So, that's all I can say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes, I, let me just make a statement that I did have the distinct pleasure of browsing through those books recently for some self-information, and which was provided by our town clerk, who was very receptive, of course, and I agree with Mr. Woods, absolutely. Those are just questions I was just posing out there, and I think that everyone understands that I've been a proponent of this project in the past, and had also presented it to a, you know, in a prior situation also. And now that Mr. Pacheco, our new town clerk, has hit the ground running with this project, I am wholeheartedly in favor of, so whatever extraneous materials that he can present to us going further, which would be in the benefit of the committee, we would greatly appreciate that, in my opinion, and again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak.
You're welcome, Mr. Ryan, and so, I'm Mark.
Um, I just wanted to make one comment, I did reach out to the town clerk of Easton, we, I did talk to her about it, so I just wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Can I make a motion that we take this under advisement? Absolutely, motion made.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Tim?
Yes, I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made, second, to take this project under advisement?
All in favor, say aye.
All those in favor, say aye. You gotta do our whole call, I'm sorry, Dave.
Your whole call, vote.
With Mr. Wood, we, we should give speed up. Mr. Woods, aye, Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Mr. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Rosa?
Aye.
Adele?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Unanimously, agreed upon, so, thank you, and we'll take everything in.
Thanks a lot, Mark.
I did hear a lot of, thank you so much, and we are proud of you, you're doing a great job. I'm telling you, we're hearing a lot of things out there, and I, I heard this was tried to be done before, but it didn't click. But I do, you do have a lot of good people on this team here, and they're all, they do look at this stuff, so, and, you know, I, I kind of felt there's gonna be a lot of good support for it, so. You got a lot of good folks, alright. And, that's great, so if you got anything else, we're staying free.
Thanks, thanks, Mark.
Bringing everything in, because I think it benefits the town, I mean, the people of the town, the town. It's just a great historical value, and it's just something good, something good, you know, that's coming down here, you know what I mean?
As someone who always thinks, what's the worst that can happen? I like that, no, there's a couple, a lot would have to go wrong for it to really be lost after this.
Yeah, that's excellent.
Let's just finish last words.
Yeah, we, yeah. Three, all, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
We're very, very happy with what you're doing for the town, we love it, alright. Okay, next young lady is not a stranger, Mrs. Gales, to our, so we have another, I did find, I got them in the pile here.
Okay.
So, we'll hand those out. This is part, what is this, can you tell us?
This is, um, the whole update, phase two, you know, or part two. This year, we are working on part one, which dealt with looking at our older homes in Dayton to document inventory. And this is a continuation of the process of documenting our historic properties in Dayton. This request, this application of eligibility focuses on, we want to update the inventories for the Mount Hope finishing company area and the North Titan Village area. As you know, this is a really important historic area. Those of us that have lived in town know, you know, the Mount Hope history is really significant. J.K. Milliken, you know, was huge in the textile industry. What he did in North Titan and the complex around the village and the community was a model for factory towns, and his was actually one of the only ones that ran as well as it did. Already, a part of the factory has been demolished, so it's time to really start getting this area documented as a historic area. On the Maccras website, there is an area form for Mount Hope Finishing Company and one for the North Titan Village. Both of those forms are dated and incomplete. There is so much more that could be, that needs to be added to say how important this is to our history, which we would work with another preservation consultant to do. This would make this area eligible for the National Register of Historic Places recognition, if, you know, if it would pass their criteria. And in fact, on one of their, the older form that's already there, at that point in time, they were saying it was eligible for the National Historic District of Historic Places. So, this is the first step in a lengthy process that, of applications that would get us to that point. A letter of intent has also been sent to the Massachusetts Historical Commission again for their survey and planning grant for FY twenty-two. It's at the same fifty percent reimbursement grant that we got this year. This, their Massachusetts Historical Commission will be reviewing the letter of intents in December. We'll know after that if we've been awarded the grant again. The grants, if we get, you know, accepted into the round, would be due by February, and the grants would be awarded in March of twenty twenty-two. So, that's what our application is all about.
So, this is similar to that of?
It's, it's very similar, yeah, it's just a different area, a different focus. We have so much history here in Dayton, just so much, and this is a way to help preserve it and be proud of it.
Any questions?
I have a question.
I have two questions, if it's okay. One, what is the dollar amount in this application?
Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
Oh, well, that's, you know, we were gonna ask you.
The total amount's twenty-five thousand dollars, and then with the grant, if we get the reimbursement grant, it would be twelve fifty.
Great, next question. If, if all of the plans that you just discussed came to their fully blossom, would it impede in any way the use by a commercial enterprise in making use of that area?
No.
It would be no architectural restrictions or requirements, or no?
If, okay, if you go, when you go to the National Register of Historic District, then you get onto that listing.
Yeah.
That's an honorary designation.
Okay.
There is no, you can do whatever you want, it's just honorary, you know, you can actually demolish your building.
Okay.
If you have local historic districts, which we do not have in Dayton right now, that's where the bylaws that come in that address the architectural, you know, components of the building, what can be changed, what can't be changed. That in itself, in establishing one of those districts, is an eighteen-month to twenty-four-month process, if you're going to do it. And it involves talking with all of the people that are in the area, including the residents, the building owners, whoever, in the conversation. At this point in time, the Historical Commission is studying about local historic districts, what they can do for us, how they would be set up. They are a lot of work, they are a lengthy process.
Okay, I just, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, I got the message, I, I gave you a lot of, I just touched upon the point, because there's been a lot of discussion and emphasis in town with the contracting business, and I, I would not want us to inadvertently put one more stumbling stone in front of eight businesses than the local area.
Right.
So, that's the.
No, that's not the intent either, the intent is to work.
I didn't challenge your intent at all, that's the question. Thank you, good work, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Comments?
Dave?
Yeah, could I, yeah, so, when, when these inventories are done, in both the, the ongoing one and this one, what, you know, what sort of the, is the product gonna be basically online, is it going to be just a collection of books? What do we, what sort of deliverable there?
Okay, the inventory will be online, and it'll be through the Massachusetts Maccras site, it's Massachusetts Arts Cultural Resource Index, so they'll be available online there. We will also get paper documents that will be available to the residents and to the town committees, hopefully one to be at the library and one at town hall. We'll also get a map overlay on the GIS that marks where the historic properties are, and, and that, once that map is established, we'll be able to continue to add to it too. So, those are the basic products that we'll be getting.
And that, that's all included in the cost of the project?
Right, right.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I make a motion? Oh, yeah. That we take that under advisement? Is there a second? Motion made, second, take it under advisement, we'll do a roll call, if there's nothing further?
Okay, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment.
Hello?
I'd like to thank.
Hello, I think I missed the motion, wait a minute.
Hold on, Karen.
What motion are we making?
There was a.
The motion was made by Mr. Rosa, seconded by Mrs. Coller, Adele. Take under advisement? And we're gonna do a roll call vote?
Uh, there's any further discussion before you vote, correct?
Yeah, any other, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a comment, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine, I, believe me, it's well taken.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Gales for her presentation tonight, and. Pat, you were very thorough in everything you've done and, uh, what you're doing again is, um, is parallel to, uh, what Mr. Pacheco is doing as a town clerk. So, uh, great work and I look forward to any, uh, receiving any other extraneous materials or gas of this project and, uh, you know, looking forward to, uh, possibly, you know, fruition at town meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Let's put it to the vote. Okay, let's do the roll call vote. Thank you. Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Reins?
Aye.
Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Rosa?
Aye.
Aye.
And myself, aye. We got everybody, uh, unanimous to, uh, take that under advisement? To give, thank you for all your work and, uh, coming in and hanging in with us through our technical.
All I know about.
These things you know, we've talked about, yeah. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Just give me the, uh, I don't want this guy touching my Zoom.
We touched my Zoom. Somebody was playing with that Zoom, right?
No, you know what happened though? When we started tonight, someone had a decoration over the camera. And Kevin spotted it. Unfortunately, yeah, so it's, it's not too bad now.
All right, so that's all we have for guests as far as presenting. And then we'll get everybody these, uh, scanned in copies and get them in your hands. Either physically or scan them. I'll get this stuff out too. I do have a little more minor stuff to go through here than we can wrap it up. There it is. Karen, you still with us? So you, the guests do not have to hang in. I'd like you to stay because I need you for a vote.
Okay.
I mean, I need you for the call. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, okay.
If you don't mind, I'd like you to hang around.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you if I need.
You know, you're gonna sneak out of here.
Oh, yeah.
But then just, can you just leave? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, guys.
We really appreciate it.
We'll see you. Have a good holiday.
You too. Yeah, have a nice holiday, folks.
Like once again.
Thanks, Mike. Bye-bye.
Now, as far as, uh, the meeting minutes from the last meeting, we had a meeting in September, but the last meeting, we didn't have a forum. But could we vote to approve those, accept those? Minutes from September twenty-third, twenty-twenty?
I made a motion that we approved in.
Motion made by Mr. Rosa. And seconded, Mr. Marvell, to approve the minutes from September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion, any change, anything corrections, additions or corrections? Hearing, seeing, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Reins?
Aye.
Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Rosa?
Conditional aye.
Mr. Mar, Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
And Mrs. Coller?
Aye.
Uh, myself, aye, unanimously. So moved. Basically, I don't have the, I, as far as the chairman's report, I'm really happy that we could finally get a quorum going. I really appreciate it. And, uh, trying to get this thing moving ahead. And I do appreciate your patience. Uh, vice chairman, do you have anything? Mr. Eckerson?
Yeah.
And we are trying to reach out to the public more, trying to get the word out.
Yeah, there's, there's no financial update. I will see, uh, check in with the account, see how she's doing. Uh, the main thing is to record the, uh, town meeting, annual town meeting articles in our financial report. Uh, because, uh, for example, uh, the historic survey that's already in process is not on our financial report yet. I think that's the only thing, but, um.
Yeah, I was, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Reins.
I did, um, register that with, through the D O Y, through the password that was in the information that was provided to both of you gentlemen. So it was put into the system.
We can, we can call in, we can call in and take that.
I need, I've not hit yet.
Did you put it in his mailbox?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is.
Tim, we did receive the, we did receive the correspondence.
The email. So what I'm saying to you is that I drew and did it after town meeting and put it in through the website, through the Department of Revenue, registered what the project was through the town, like for the historic preservation pot. It's already been done, so it's registered with the state. So I'm just, what I'm saying is that it usually takes to around November before you see those monies start, you know, hitting the, you know, deduction, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, makes sense.
I hope that makes sense.
It does.
Damn, you're wearing my pieces off.
Dave?
Hey, Dave.
Mr. Eric, yeah. Mr. Erickson, do you have anything?
Yeah, that's all I have at this time.
All right. As far as communications, we really, the only thing I, I had was, uh, the bill for the, uh, we'll have to pay that. We paid, we had it posted in newspaper twice for the public hearing. So we just have to pay that bill. That's the only bill that we have. Well, Karen, do I send that to you?
Oh, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, what is the amount for the bill, sir, if I may?
Uh, I do have it. It's here somewhere. It was, um, I just had my hand on it.
You know, I don't know if there's been a motion before at any time to make a motion.
I haven't done anything yet because I really just, I did want to put my hand on it. Mr. Reins, do we need a motion to pay that?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm asking.
I'm trying, let me find it, Tim, and then give you the amount. I know it's twice than what it would have been because we had to, uh.
Yeah, don't, um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, don't forget to pass it around to the vice chair also. You know, he's the finest gentleman for the committee, so.
Yes, sir.
Looking for an amount and a motion.
Hold on. Bear with me.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk.
Thanks, Karen.
Why, we think they're in the big box.
I just said.
Wasn't on this paper, was it?
No, I had it, I had an actual bill that I brought with me.
Let me try, you didn't throw it at anybody.
Hold on, a second.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, while you're looking for that, do you mind if I say a few things?
Go ahead, Mr. Woods.
Okay, thank you. Um, I must be getting older. I forgot what I was gonna say.
What was it? Must have been good, huh?
It, it was two things I wanted to say and
Go ahead.
One of them was the town administrator had asked me if we could have a placeholder for an article. Um, and I told him we have never done that and I don't think we ever will. But the, the Dayton Water District is looking to purchase a piece of land with some wells on it. I really don't think that we can have a placeholder. We have no idea what they're doing and.
I don't think we've ever.
No, we, we never have, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, with you bringing that up, I got it. I got that though.
Well, I told him I'd bring it up and I brought it up and, you know, I told him, I didn't think we would.
I think that. I don't believe that that was, uh, something that has been done in the past. I mean, I haven't been here as long as you, but I don't think that's ever been done in the past.
Right. You know, I, I would be, I would be against it myself, but I'm bringing it up just because.
But if I, yeah, if I, I'd like to say as far as that goes, I, I don't know if I, I heard something, I may have not. But, uh.
All right, and, and, and I have one more thing.
What I'm saying is, read the dollar amount, sir. This poor guy. Just, Mr. Woods, let's just say, let's just put it this way. We have a certain criteria where we have a cutoff date.
I know that.
So I don't think we have placeholders in a sense.
We don't, so end of that discussion.
If that's all right with you, I'd like to move on to the amount.
Well, wait, I have one more thing, Tom.
Oh, you thought of it? All right.
Yeah, I thought of it. Yeah, I'm sorry. I had a rough day.
No problem. Go ahead.
The other thing is, I think we need to think about changing our meeting day. Because we meet the same time as Conservation. And Conservation Commission has a member. Don't talk while I'm talking, please. It makes it difficult with Zoom.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, but just listen.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Conservation meets the same time we do, so their member cannot meet with us, right? Their vote is just important as any one of our votes.
I know.
So obviously Conservation took our time slot. The Board of Selectmen gave it to them. And we've kind of been put on the back burner and now we're short that member. And, and, you know, we need him for voting purposes and for his input.
And I can tell you, this was discussed and I, we have what we have because it's almost like we have to sacrifice one guy that can't make it. We are, now we have a building. We, I mean, we have a room and we have a brand new set of equipment. So, I mean, we tried to change it before and it, it didn't work too well. We, we met at the old town hall.
I don't think we have much choice at this point now. You know, Wednesdays are not a good night because a lot of boards meet on Wednesdays. Thursday night obviously is not gonna work because it coincides with Conservation. Friday night, nobody wants to go to a meeting on Friday night because it's gonna have fish and chips. Uh, and Mondays is another day that nobody really wants to go to a meeting that night because nobody likes Mondays. So the only day I think would be possible would be Tuesday. You know, and that would help us making our forum also, you know what I mean? Because sometimes you're just one man shot. And if you keep having it on a Thursday, and that one man's never gonna show up.
I do have.
I, if, um, if I may, Mrs. Chairman, just briefly, I, I, you know, I have to agree with Mr. Woods, absolutely. I, I absolutely, whole highly agree. It's been a nine-member composition. That's the way the bylaw is written for the town of Dayton. That member's vote is just as important as the other members, members who's been on the board. So I am in total agreement with Mr. Wood, Mr. Woods' comments on it. Thank you.
I, I can understand your, uh, I can see where you're coming from, but I also have to tell you some feedback from another member that helps us run the camera and everything. It doesn't work. This was, we didn't even have a place to land before. Now at least we, we make it a start.
It took us a while to get to this.
Took us a while just to get to this place because of the library.
Well, then maybe we should reach out to the Conservation Commission and have them, and, and send us, send us another member somehow.
Yep.
You know, where or something, you know, regardless of the night they meet, I don't know how it's gonna work out. I have no idea. Again, because they meet the same night that we do. And again, we were just, um, we were hijacked. You know, use that terminology, okay?
Yeah, but, uh, Mr. Reins and Mr., go ahead, Mr., are you done, Tim?
What does Dave Marvell have to say?
Well, go ahead, Dave. But I was, oh, members of the board, I ask that we suspend the conversation just long enough to hear the night, the yarding the bell and take a vote on that.
Yep.
Yeah, that makes sense too. Okay, so what we have is the balance due is two forty-eight, forty-eight. And that's for two, two different sessions of having this ad run for the public hearing.
Two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Yeah, that's unbelievable. And that's a ton gets that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for, what was it, two forty-eight, thirty-four?
Yes, sir. Two forty-eight, forty-eight. One hundred and twenty-four, twenty-four.
Motion that we pay, um, the bill for two forty-eight, forty-eight to, um, who was it, um?
Community Newspaper Company, Patriot Ledger, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Gatehouse, Gatehouse Media, Mr. Reins.
I second the motion.
Motion made seconded to pay the bill and the amount is two forty-eight, forty-eight. It's Gatehouse Media. Roll call? Do a roll call, Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Reins?
Aye.
Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Rosa?
Aye.
Mrs. Coller?
Adele?
Myself, aye. Unanimously, uh, voted on and so moved. Okay, good. We finally get that. Karen, I'll get that to you.
Does that conclude any business required?
I wanna make sure I got everything. Oh, I got so many papers. I gotta get a little more. Uh, the other thing is the, uh, public input, I don't think there is any on the Zoom and it's not here. So we'd like to set.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I'd like to, um, see if, um, you would call me at, um, sometime in the next, in the near future so I get some, uh, materials through you, which we discussed.
Okay. That's fine.
Uh, next meeting?
Yes, you wanna set the night? Do you wanna meet in December?
On a Tuesday.
He wants to meet on a Tuesday.
I won't.
You won't?
Nope.
That's, that's, that, this is part of what happened before. We were talking about it and, uh, what happened was we lost you, Mr. Woods and Mrs. Coller, because we were operating off a Chromebook from Mr. Eckerson. So we, at, at other meeting, we lost you guys. But there was a discussion about the, uh, trying to find it. It's not working for Mr. Marvell.
Well, if I may.
You know, Woods, this night works better for our A V guy.
The, the, the night is one part of the question. The other thing is the timing of the meeting at, in the evening. So is there an adjustment in the timing for either the Conservation Commission or us that works?
Not for me. I mean, if, once again, I, I'll, I'll step, I'll step down and leave the committee. I'm not mad.
No, no.
But it took me a while to put this together and then we're gonna change it?
No, no, I'm not.
So I'm just saying, no, I'm not mad. I'm just gonna walk away because I'm tired. I'm tired. I can't take too much more of this.
Yeah.
You actually did a line for all the town hall every day to get this going, get the keys and everything. So it's up to you guys we wanna do.
So I'm, I'm asking if Mr. Woods and Mr. Reins or whomever would use their, um, wherewithal to see if the other folks can meet at a slightly different time and then people can make their meetings. It's just a thought, um, and I'm done.
Yeah, from what I understand, they don't wanna move, so.
Dave set this up for Thursday.
There's a lot of work to get this thing in here, this machinery.
Yep.
And the building.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Reins.
Who sets this up, a Thursday, is this a Saturday setup?
Yeah.
At seven o'clock? So why do we think of what we have to change?
I, I'm not sure why we have to change. I'm kind of, I'm kind of like floored by it, you know?
I think they're just, I don't know why. Trying to think again, Mr. Diggs.
I mean, if Mr. Woods wanted to add some more to it, that, that's fine, but.
To be like the third Thursday or whatever.
Because we had that forever, you know, until we got bucked out and then we decided like, if we can grab this room, we'll go back to our third Thursday.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Reins.
Um, this is just a thought. Um, I know the Conservation, I, I believe they have a full complement with an associate member. I don't know if, um, the associate member has voting rights. I don't, I believe they do not under the law. And wondering is that maybe that associate member could attend our meetings, but again, I don't know if that would be legal under what our bylaw states in town for. I think it would probably have to be a solid Conservation member. I, I don't know. Is that something we could look in, look into possibly? I don't know.
I would say we'll have, we'll have to look into it. Doesn't mean we gotta change that way.
Just to pose the question, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Robert Woods again. And we, we don't have to settle this tonight. It's just something.
Yeah, exactly. Good tale.
But maybe, let's say January, let's get a ducks in a row. Okay, so every board and committee now.
Could we approach them and find out why they can't send somebody over here?
Because, um, you know, the.
They can't hear or they can't, you know, there's.
Yeah, yeah, they do very important. I don't like talking over people, so when I'm talking, could you just please allow me to talk?
Go ahead.
Tom, don't interrupt me. Please. Jesus, Tommy.
You have to be a better listener. Go ahead.
Right, let's just give this a little time. And I was saying, the work that the Conservation Commission does, it's very intricate and, and, and they really, you know, they, they're hard pressed at a lot of the projects that they're working on. They're not gonna send one guy over here during their meeting. Uh, their meetings are a little more important than our meetings, in my opinion. So let's give it a little time.
We could.
Okay, that's all I got. I'm not saying another.
Yeah, I mean, we could kick it around. Uh, can we just kick it around a little bit and think about?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we do leave this evening, I'd just like to say that, hey, Dave, I feel your white brother. I understand where you're coming from. You know, you set all this stuff up and, you know, I don't really. I don't really wanna have a change of evening, evening of night either because it's always been the same way since I've been involved, which has been, you know, almost nine years with interruptions, so I'll put it that way. So, you know, I understand, Dave, you set everything up, man, and thank you for doing that for, for, for us and, you know, so we can continue our mission. So I just wanna say that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With the 16th of December?
That's the third Thursday, right?
And that's what we mean.
Yeah.
It's the 16th of December, the third Thursday. Let's set it for that for now. We can always revisit this.
I'm making a motion to have our next meeting December 16th.
I second it. Motion made, seconded, to have it on 16th, 7 o'clock, prime time.
Sounds good.
Mr. Woods? Call for the vote, Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Reins?
Aye.
Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mrs. Coller?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Unanimous, so let's...
I'm making a motion. We adjourn.
We're just gonna ask that. All those in favor?
Aye. Thanks for having me back, by the way, guys.
Marvell, this is the meeting you did. So call it before I do this, tell them myself. Unanimous, good night, folks. My honor, I tell you, thank you so much, friends. It's probably a little longer than they, they like, but I appreciate it. 9:05.
Yeah, thanks for the warm welcome back.
Oh, yeah, I'm glad to have you, Dave.
I'm only joking.
Hey, Dave, Marvell, can you hear me?